Six o'clock. Welcome, guys.
Hi.
Good. Are the two young people prepared to testify?
Yes. Actually, yes.
Okay, David, we're ready to go whenever you are.
We're ready to go. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the April 27 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for Hyde Park. Let's begin. Please let's stand and...
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for coming.
I didn't say...
I do want to say that as we move through the agenda, we may have one of our members recuse themselves, but we'll talk about that as we move down. We just want to alert you to that. Camp Victory, 2115. We're opening the public hearing. I need a motion.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have, continuing that, we're waiting for the... The sequa, the county to finish the sequa.
The Hyde Park Planning Board.
Hyde Park Planning Board. So, do we know when that anticipated?
I think they are concluding seeker on May 14th. So, we should be able to act on May 25th, our next meeting.
Okay, all right. So, yes, Ms. Moss?
I believe they are also waiting for the county DPW to respond, and I don't believe they've heard back from them yet.
Okay.
I think they have.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but we're still waiting for the planning board.
Yes.
Okay, so, we'll need to move the, we'll need to continue the public hearing until...
Make a motion.
Until the next meeting, which is June 22nd?
May 25th.
May 20, I'm sorry.
May 25th.
May 26th.
25th.
Everyone's...
Okay.
May 25th.
May 25th.
Yes.
Two five, May 25th. Thank you very much.
A motion.
Is a second?
To continue, May 25th.
To continue the public hearing for Camp Victory Lake for May 25th. All in favor? Uh, women, yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
There are public comments for...
I'm sorry.
For Camp Victory Lake.
Just to add in to the public record?
Yes. We have received a comment from a local neighbor.
Yes.
I would move that those be put into the public record. Those are from...
Kelly Reddell Hardisty.
Okay. I would move that those be put into the public record.
Do you want me to read the comment aloud, or...
Don't need them. I'm sorry.
Do you want me to read the comment aloud, or is it sufficient that we mentioned it?
Sure.
It's two minutes.
Go ahead.
Dear Board, this was actually to Michael Dupree and the Planning Board members, but she also forwarded it to me as well. Dear Board members, my husband and I have resided on Applegate Lane in Hyde Park for 16 years. Our home is just off Netherwood Road, approximately one quarter mile away from the Camp Victory Lake project that is currently in front of the Board for site plan approval. I understand from having reviewed the site plan that has been submitted, there is a request to build a nearly 50,000 square foot building. I also understand that there is intent to use the facility much more frequently than the camp is being used now, with a capacity of allowing up to 6,000 people onto that site during any given event. I will tell you from past experiences that many weekends are very noisy and difficult to deal with due to traffic issues at the site. Considering the sporadic use of the property, we have learned to adapt to several intrusive weekends each summer. However, increasing the number of events and the amount of people commuting to the site is a cause of great concern to us. 6,000 visitors is nearly 1,500 more people than who attend a Renegades baseball game. How can the area possibly deal with that amount of traffic safely? How can it not affect the quality of life for those of us who choose to live off of the main traffic corridors? Furthermore, to put the building in perspective, it's the size of Stop &amp; Shop. Although it would be long overdue to see the camp prepared and updated, however, nearly doubling or even tripling the people on the site for events and creating an enormous structure on that site is not feasible. I have grave concerns about the project and the location and felt that my thoughts need to be expressed. Unfortunately, myself and my neighbors are not close enough to the project to have been notified. Due to the nature of the noise surrounding, sorry, due to the nature of the noise surrounding wells that could be affected without a public water supply, as well as the overwhelming increase in traffic, I would encourage the Board to find a way to inform more than just the adjoining property owners, so they know what is planned in our backyards. Hopefully, in-depth studies of the various issues affecting the neighbors will be thoroughly reviewed before any approvals are given. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. Sincerely, Kelly and David Hardisty.
There's no representative for Camp Victory here?
No, there is not.
Okay, all right. So noted in the public record. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item, 2119Z, is for the Rite Aid request, multiple variances for signage. We're waiting for clarification in terms of what position have we heard from them?
Yes, I don't remember the date, but recently Nancy Forrest contacted me and said that she had not heard back from the corporate office about how they want to proceed. So, she asked us to continue today.
Okay. Then, I would like to open the public hearing for Rite Aid, 2119Z.
Motion to open?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. There being no, there is nobody representing Rite Aid here this evening, correct? Okay. Then, we will wait again for their decision in terms of how they want to proceed. I would entertain a motion for continuing this public hearing until May 25th.
Make a motion that would continue this to May 25th.
Their second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. The next is Thompson. Is somebody representing? Yes, sir. Good evening, sir. I'm well, thank you. Would like to, motion to open the public hearing for 2102Z, Thompson.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Welcome, sir. Sorry.
Welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back.
So, this is just, just a kind of quick recap and then a couple of comments. The public hearing was also last month. This is basically to close out an original permitted addition from 1982, the accessory apartment that was constructed within that addition. Again, never closed out or approved. Just for the Board to know, my steps for this project are the zoning board of appeals, then the Board of Health, and then the Planning Board. You guys are kind of the first step always in my mind. The Board of Health, I need to retain an engineer, and that's kind of the expensive part, and so if the owner can avoid that because something goes wrong here. And then Planning Board, right? So, just a couple of comments from the last month, and then I'll be all set. The Board had noted kind of a what-if scenario, if what if the house sale sells and the original, the full home is not owner occupied? That's illegal, right? So, that violates immediately the special permit, and it would be revoked. So, I've never actually heard a Board say, you know, kind of the what-if in the future. There was also the comment about a 200% variance, and technically, you can't have more than a 100% variance given. If you have a setback of 20 feet, and you give a setback and you reduce it down to zero, that's a 100% variance.
I think the density we are talking about is...
Right. And so, for this, the density variance we're requesting mathematically is a 60% density variance, right? So, just mathematically, the way it works out, within its two units, its two houses per full acre, the amount of acreage that's there, which is 116,988, doing the math, my variance request is for 60%.
You're at what, what's the square footage on the property right now? The size of the plot?
16,988.
So, it's about 39% of an acre?
Yes.
And you, and we're, if I understand correctly, to fall within the requirements that we have now, and you're adding a second unit, so it would be a full acre?
So, we need a full acre, 4,000, 43,560 feet.
So, you're going from 39 to 100% in terms of increasing it?
So, I'm going from...
39% of an acre to 100% of an acre. So, you're more than doubling the requirement that you're...
So, it's half acre zoning?
For two.
So, it's if half acre zoning for each? So, if I, so I need essentially, I need half of an acre, which is 21,780 square feet per each one?
Is that, Ms. Moss, am I interpreting that correctly?
I'm...
Okay. So, mathematically, I'll go through it. So, for each unit, I need 21,780 square feet.
Correct.
If mathematically, I take my square footage that's there and divide it in half, that's 8,494 square feet. I need the mathematical difference between the two of them, which is 60%.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, you're good, I have the one that...
Oh, I understand, we're talking about different numbers, but I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, that's where I'm coming from, mathematically.
Yeah, okay.
And then, just lastly, kind of to wrap it up, again, I did my presentation last month, it's been there almost 40 years. There, it's not visible from the street. I'm not increasing the footprint, so I'm not going outside of it. My lot coverage, so technically, the impervious area lot coverage is up to 50%. I'm down below 20 for the area. And at last month's meeting, we hadn't heard from an owner, so I don't know if the neighborhood is concerned about it.
Okay, okay. Is there any other individual to talk about this in the audience? I see none, okay. Questions? Questions from the Board?
No.
Ms. Moss, anything? Mr. Joshua?
I did not receive any comments.
Counsel? Anything?
I have nothing to add, no.
Okay, all right. Then, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe we have a, we have a resolution? Paul? Yeah, you want to read it? You want me to read it? I'm kind of losing it. All right, we have a resolution here. Resolution... Sorry. No? It's not, because it is... But...
Back page is not correct.
Denies.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Okay, yeah, all right.
That can be fixed.
And what do we insert?
Deny.
Okay. Apologize. Okay. Resolution for David Rosen and Funda Se...
Wrong one.
I'm sorry.
Wrong one.
Wrong one? Don't want that one. For the Thompson accessory apartment, Three Pond Road, dated April 27, 2022, a resolution 22-02Z. Whereas the applicant, David Freeman, on behalf of Dolores Shelley and Michael Thompson, have submitted an application for an area variance to bring an existing accessory apartment within one family dwelling into compliance, the project on property located Three Pond Road, Hyde Park, identified as tax parcel number 133200-6163-03-023417, in the neighborhood zoning district, the site, and whereas the project is depicted on site plan entitled accessory apartment for Thompson residence, prepared by Mr. Freeman, D. Freeman Architect, and dated December 15, 2021, as well as interior floor plans prepared by the same, and dated January 14, 2022. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with Section 267B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law, Section 108-336B2, regarding the requested variance. Requested variance will cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and/or a detriment to nearby properties. The requested variance will result in an increase in the intensity of the permitted use at the site, which is already undersized for one family dwelling. Legalizing the accessory apartment will increase the density for, from a single-family dwelling on .39 acre lot to a two-dwelling on the same lot size, which extends, which exceeds the maximum permissible density under the town code. The increased intensity of the use of the site may also cause an increase in parking, traffic, and noise due to additional occupants. The potential for more frequent turnover in occupants within an accessory apartment may also diminish the large one-family character of the neighborhood, especially on Pond Road, where the nearby properties are single-family only. The neighboring properties will be affected by the increased density which would incur with the legalization of the accessory apartment in the one-family dwelling. While not determinative, the property deed is dated August 18, 2004, and recorded August 27, 2004, contains a restricted covenant that only one family, only one, one-family house shall be erected or constructed on the lot. This deed restriction was memorized in the prior deed dated September 4, 2002, and recorded September 6, 2002, which was conveyed to the current owner via the 2004 deed. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible by the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The applicant seeks to establish a second dwelling unit at the site. The site is .39 acres, and the zoning law requires a minimum of .5 acres per dwelling unit. Therefore, the site cannot be developed or subdivided to have a second dwelling unit without violating the zoning law's density requirements. The only way to establish two dwelling units, that is one family dwelling and an accessory apartment, and comply with a density limitation, would be to purchase adjoining property and merge it with the site. The neighboring parcels are already developed, and this is not a feasible alternative. Number three, the requested variance is numerically substantial, as the permitted maximum average density for the site will increase by over 100%, since it will double the number of permitted dwellings per acre. Number four, the requested variance may have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The conversion of the structure to include an accessory apartment may require increase in parking area. In addition, a second dwelling unit has the potential to increase the number of vehicles at the site at any given time, which could adversely contribute to the pollution and contamination, stormwater runoff. The applicant has indicated the property owner's intent to sell the property. Should that occur, and should the number of occupants of the accessory apartment increase, then these impacts will become more likely. Moreover, the Duchess County Health Department has determined that the private water and sewage arrangements does not currently meet the department's standards, which may be causing potential negative environmental impacts related to the well and sewage disposal system. The difficulties are, number five, the difficulties are self-created, and the property owners constructed the accessory apartment in the absence of a lawfully issued building permit and without applying for the requisite area variances. The difficulties that follow occurred solely because the property owner failed to comply with the requirements of the town code, and now seek to legalize an illegal accessory apartment. Be it further resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby denies the request variance subject to the following conditions: payment of all fees and escrow. Is there a motion to accept this?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you take, would you pull the Board, please?
James Agarwal?
Yes.
Gerald Bowen?
Yes.
Paul Donnelly?
Yes.
Richard Perkins?
Yes.
David McNary?
Yes.
The resolution then is for variance is hereby denied for the Thompson accessory apartment. All right. Next item is item 2204Z, the Rosen setback for the deck. Is there somebody? I'm sorry. You need to declare? Okay. Before we have a, before we open for a public meeting? You have a, you want to recuse yourself?
No.
On the record?
On the record, I would just like to declare that I do know Dawn, and she's friends with my daughter, and like many people in Hyde Park, I know them. I have no interest in her work or in this project.
Okay, thank you.
And you can be fair and impartial?
And I can be fair and impartial.
Thank you.
Okay. Then, I'd like a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. I just wanted to, my name is Dawn Santiago. I'm representing Christina DeShrom, architecture, the architect for this project. And just a small recap for this project, we are hoping to construct a raised wooden deck off the back of the property, where the existing home is sitting in the setback. We'd like to align the deck with the house, and that would be 3 foot 10 from the existing property line, which is where the current house resides. We're asking for a variance to do so.
Questions of the members of the Board? Any? None for you, sir? Counsel, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
But it's a continuation of the public hearing, right?
It is.
But no, not any questions.
Yes. Did we open the public hearing?
We did.
Okay.
Oh, I missed it.
Have to bear with me, sometimes we're open, sometimes we're closed. Today, we're open.
Just wanted to check if you had any additional questions. The last meeting, I don't believe there was any particular action that I needed to give any additional, any drawings, any provisions, or anything like that, so I just wanted to come and grant to you any additional question.
Okay, good, all right. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to comment? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I believe we do have a resolution. Who? You? Would you like to read it, please?
I sure would. Resolution to grant an area variance, David Rosen and Funda Se...
Se...
Segen? Okay, sorry. 42 Old Post Road, Statsburg, New York, dated 4/27/2022, resolution number 22-04Z. Whereas the applicant, Christina Dowse-Harmon, on behalf of David Rosen and Funda Segen, has submitted an application for an area variance to construct a deck within the side-yard setback at property located at 42 Post Old Post Road, Statsburg, New York, 12580, identified as tax parcel number 616103023417, in the Hamlet zoning district, and whereas the project is depicted on a plan entitled, proposed site plan, prepared by Christina Dowseman, architect, dated 10/28/21, the plan, and whereas the applicant seeks an area variance zoning law, Section 108, 5.15, to permit a sideyard setback of 3 feet 10 inches where 10 feet is required. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with Section 267-B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law, Section 108-33.6B2, regarding the requested variance. Number one, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. Established vegetation in front of property will shield and provide adequate visual blocking. The deck will not be visible from the street and not observable or offensive to the neighbor or to the north, and it is, as it is hidden inside the existing fence. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The applicant wished to keep the visual aesthetics consistent with the footprint of the house. The alternative is to move the deck to the rear of the house, however, the homeowner felt that that change would have, would leave, actually, an awkward, empty space between the deck and the exterior wall of the house. Number three, the requested variance is numerically substantial. The applicant seeks to increase by more than 50% from 10 foot to 3 foot 10 inches. While requested variance is a substantial increase, it is important to note that the footprint of the house is not changing, nor will there be any alteration to the original character of the home, either visually or ecologically. Four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The deck will be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and substantially shielded from the street and neighboring properties. In addition, the deck will be constructed utilizing cedar wood pervious with proper runoff effected. Number five, the difficulties are self-created as the applicant and owner of the property wishes to build a deck on his house. Additionally, the homeowner had no control over the fact the house was originally built within the setback in 1900, when no zoning laws were applicable. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions: one, pursuant to Section 108-33.5F, one, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise this variance is revoked, and the second is payment of all fees.
It's been moved. Is there a second motion on this resolution?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you pull the members of the Board, please?
I would just like to make a quick correction on this.
Sure.
I wrote the wrong tax parcel number in the resolution. The correct number for 42 Old Post Road is 6167-03-018325.
So, 61, 6170?
6167.
03?
Dash 03, yep.
618325.
Dash 018325.
I knew I didn't get it right, okay.
I will have it corrected when I file it with the clerk.
So noted for the record. Madam Secretary, would you pull the, pull the Board, please?
James Agarwal?
Yes.
Gerald Bowen?
Yes.
Paul Donnelly?
Yes.
Richard Perkins?
Yes.
David McNary?
Yes.
Motion, the variance is passed. Thank you very much. Good luck on your project. Okay. Next is the 2203Z HB, the Quick Stop. I need a motion to open the, continue the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public hearing, we are waiting on... We are waiting from the Planning Board to finish the sequa. So, at this point, there's nothing more we can do? Is there anybody? Noodles? Good, okay. Let's refresh our memory here.
There is a handheld microphone, I believe, in the bottom there, and it should be on already.
Hi, I'm Brendan Petrella with Mori Architects, here to represent this project. I'll stand on this side, so...
I'll stand on this side, so in case anybody on it says interested. Just a quick recap of the project. As you mentioned, we are still in front of the planning board. They are going through the seeker process, but we would still like to be in front of you and continue this process with you. There has not been significant change to the site plan. As you're aware, we are taking an existing facility, and our intent is to renovate the facility with all new construction. We are seeking three variances. One is a front yard setback for our underground storage tanks. They are divined as a building, so therefore they are technically in our front yard and do require a variance, even though they don't have the impact that a structure typically would have inside the front yard. Our second variance request is scale. The canopy of a gas station actually counts towards your scale, so that actually is what's throwing us over the 7,500 square foot of allowable scale. Finally, it's impervious coverage. Due to being a motor vehicle-related parcel, we have a lot of access ways that require asphalt pavement. First off, in order to improve queuing and to make sure that we don't have backups on Route 9 at our pumps, we have double, two-way access drives around all the pumps, so that you can access in either direction or leave if there's pumps that are blocked. So that increases our asphalt count. We also, the code requires that our convenience store has rear access for loading of storage. We actually use that as a two-fold design, and we have our diesel and larger vehicles come sweep around the back of the building and also have our loading. So we do have a very small site. We're under three quarters of an acre, so that's really what throws our coverage over, and that's why we're requesting that variance as well. We are, what else has changed? Oh, the exterior elevation has actually been under review with the planning board, and with some of their comments and some additional revisions, we've actually upgraded, I think, the elevation since you've last seen it. The stone water table has continued all the way across. The windows aren't large commercial storefronts. They're a little bit more of a historic, more, I'll call it a kind of a residential scale to them now. We've changed the colors to be a little bit earthier tone instead of the cold gray, something I think that fits into Hyde Park a little bit better. Some more dentals, trims, and things of that nature. So currently, as I mentioned, we're in front of the planning board, and tonight, honestly, our, my real hope would be to see if we could get some sort of request for a referral letter from the planning board. They seem to be very much in favor of the project, very much in favor of the variances, so any of their input would be helpful here in front of the board.
Okay.
Question?
Go ahead.
The tanks?
Yes.
DOT, you have to approve those also?
DOT won't be involved, I don't believe, with the tanks because they're out.
New state?
I don't know the answer to that. I shouldn't, I shouldn't say that. I don't know if DOT, but there probably is a state agency that's responsible for reviewing them.
Okay. All right. So moving large trucks back, is that simply to deliver supplies or?
So the code requires that deliveries happen behind the building, and you have to have an access way to it. What we're also using that for is we have our diesel pumps separated from our main gasoline pumps, because as we had discussed in our previous meeting, that conflict with larger vehicles always blocks off multiple pumps and blocks off vehicular ways.
Okay.
So what we're using this for is getting our diesel pump here and then allowing all those diesel vehicles to just come around the, this is their traffic pattern where everybody else's is here. So they're not really in conflict with each other.
Will there be signs directing those larger vehicles around the back?
We, well, the pump's there, but we could have small directional signage on the site or something.
Or maybe a police arrow or something?
Yeah, we could look into that, absolutely.
Now, do you have a, is the left entry and the right exit, or is it both ways?
Both of these are both ways. So as you know now, right now, the curb, there is no curb cut, right? Our entire site is open. So we do have two-way in both directions. It probably, you bring up a good point. It may be beneficial to make sure that diesel knows to only enter from this site, because bringing them through here could be an issue. So maybe we need some smaller site signage to look in, to deal with that. So that's something I will definitely broach with the planning board.
Refresh my memory, there is a, I know there's a wetlands to the south of the, of the property.
Correct.
And you have, you're expanding your impervious, this is one of the requirements or one of the, one of the requests. How are you then handling all of the runoff water?
So the way the runoff works now, currently, what happens is all runoff runs into a system that actually drains into that stormwater area that you're talking about. What our intent now is to do is to collect all of our runoffs through catch basins and oil-water separators, then direct them back through the culvert that they currently go through after they've been remediated, and then down through the current stormwater area down here to the south. In fact, our site, multiple sites, collect in a little basin, a retention basin here to the north of us, and their stormwater comes with an underground pipe now that runs out here down towards the stormwater area.
All right. So your, your, I'll call them dry wells. Are there multiple ones on the property?
Yeah, there's going to be a couple catch basins. Forgive me, I don't know exactly where they are, but I believe there's one here, here, some out by the road. They, again, they go to an oil-water separator, which actually the town engineer is working with our engineer now to currently finalize that design, and that's all in front of the planning board as well.
Okay.
And that all gets, again, piped to here, and then there's an existing culvert pipe that then goes out down towards the stormwater area.
Okay. The closeness of the underground tanks to 9, is 9 a state or a county?
State. State.
Is there, does the state have to approve that?
That's not inside there right of way. That's inside our boundary, so I don't see any reason they would be concerned with that. We've located them in this area, because as you mentioned, we have storm, we have wetlands to the south, so we want to stay away from them. And then we actually have a small stream tributary that's to our east as well, so that's really why we pushed them up here to the front of the site. But again, not inside the right of way of the, of the DOT.
Okay. So they're under that pavement?
Correct. Here and here.
Okay. So access to them under the pavement. Okay. The density of the building, you're expanding, you're increasing the size of the building?
Correct.
And so the, the new size, refresh my memory, would be?
Let me grab my book. I believe we're 3,500 square feet for the building, no, sorry, 3,150 for the building. There is a small second floor office that's 800 square feet. So the building itself, well under scale. Once you get that canopy here, which is, as you can see, it's, I mean, it's almost bigger than the building, is 2,300 square feet, I'm sorry, 2,860 square feet. Add in your parking, that puts you over your 17.
So office, second floor, is most of first floor, then all retail?
Yes, it's all commercial space. Yep. So it's all the convenience store, small deli.
Okay. All right. Questions?
I'm encouraged by the project, and you know, the current building is really quite an eyesore and et cetera. The capacity is going to be enormously increased in terms of what you can provide, not only in terms of pumps and now this, you know, deli and food, et cetera. What concerns me is the traffic. I drive by there all the time, and people are really speeding there. I mean, easily 50, 55, 60 plus. Now with all that density coming out, all people coming in and out, how is it not going to be accidents and traffic?
I actually, my argument would be that it's probably more safe now, because we're controlling our entrances and our exits, as opposed to what's there now. I don't disagree with you that there is, you know, a lot of people that travel this road at high speed, but I don't think the volume of people that are on the road is going to be increased by the project. You're right, more people fortunately will come in and out of the site. Nobody goes there now. I mean, I wouldn't stop there for gas. I mean, it's my client, you know? It's just, it's not well-lit, it doesn't look nice. I have it on the back here. I mean, there's no, it's a dead site. Nobody wants to go there. So I can't disagree with you that there'll be more traffic. That's the intent. But I, I.
I just wanted to add that on the record.
I do think the site distance is good in both directions.
It's excellent. I mean, it's basically flat.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Questions?
No.
Paul? Richard?
No, I'm good.
Counsel?
I would just like to remind the board that the Department of Transportation has control over the access points, and permits will be needed from them. They will determine the safety of the, of the access points.
Good, good. That's good to know.
Thank you, Ted.
All right. So is there anybody from the public that would make any comments? None? Okay. What I'd like to do, then, we are waiting for sequels, so before we go ahead and act, we'll need that. So I would like a motion to continue the.
Motion.
Didn't you say something?
Yeah, I believe that you, your board at this point can request referrals or comment from the planning board, and I think they're in favor of the project, and if you can go with that process, I'd like to have their, their comments involved with this process.
We will do that. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
May I, David, just add that we did get the response from Dutchess County Planning?
Correct.
And Development, that it is a matter of local concern, just to get that on the record.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And let's put that document, is that document should be added to the, thank you. Okay. So I would like to have a motion to continue the public hearing to May 25th?
June 22nd for this one.
June 22nd?
Yes.
Because we don't think that the sequel will be done in that period of time?
They are, they are not before the planning board until I believe June 15th, so we can wait until June 22nd at least, yes.
Is there, do you have other information on that?
I think we're on the first meeting a month with the planning board. Not to say, you only have one meeting a month, so it doesn't matter. Okay, perfect.
All right. Then we'll continue it till June, June 22nd? A motion to that effect?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. It's an exciting project.
Yeah.
And I think, as you say, I have not stopped there, go by it.
Your client is very anxious to begin this project because that site just wasn't paying my attention.
And if anybody wants additional information, if they watched the planning board meeting, you did a great job.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Let's move on to 12, 1703Z, the Enclave Extension.
Chairman McNary, just one second. I just need a quick clarification. Ms. Wilson, do we need a motion and a second to request comment from the planning board?
Are you requesting comment from the planning board? Or you were requesting a referral from the ZPA?
I'm requesting a referral from, what?
No.
I will take both. The ZPA will refer to the planning board. That's good, too, so they know that this board is in favor of the project, also, and variances may or may be likely to be helpful.
I think I'm confused then.
I thought it was, we were asking for a referral from the planning board that they're happy with the project.
So, just, just so I can, actually, I'd like to clarify that a little bit, too, if I can, then, if this, the way I was explained at our last planning board meeting is they, they receive a request from this board to ask for their input. This board doesn't normally send their input to the planning board, is what I was told. If that's correct, that's what I would like, I guess, but if this board can send its input to the planning board about how you feel about the variances as we're moving forward, I think that would offer some confidence in the project as we move forward. Okay.
And that would be, I would defer to the board, but if it's not a standard policy of.
First, first, yes.
I think we'll, we'll refer to the board. Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Enclave Extension, we are, a motion to open?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. Welcome, sir.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
So at the request of the board the last time, we provided some updated information as to the permits, where they're at. I do have some further news from that, from the time we submitted, that Ted can attest to here. We've finally gotten through for building permits for the sewer and water plants, which are the kingpins of getting the rest of the project moving forward. So the, as you asked, is the applicant really wanting to move forward? Well, we have building permits to start, and they want to eagerly move into those buildings and start moving forward with the building permits, which will allow us to then proceed and get the houses up.
Okay. Good. That's good news.
That's, yeah, absolutely.
Finally.
It will be great, trust me, Ted, and I know how long this project has been for both of us. It'd be great to see it come to fruition.
Good. All right. Appreciate you coming. Is there any other, any other people from the public that would like to speak on this? No? In that case, I would.
Reminder.
Attention.
I'm right on point.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a resolution? Who drafted this? Anybody?
Yeah.
You did?
I did.
Okay. All right. Then I'll, wait a minute. Resolution to grant a fifth one-year extension of a variance, the Enclave at Hyde Park, Cream Street at Long Branch Road, Poughkeepsie, New York, 12601, dated April 27, 2022, resolution Whereas on March 22, 2017, a resolution 1703Z, the applicant 54 Hyde LLC was granted a variance to change the average density in the Green Belt District from 2.5 acres per dwelling unit to 1.41 acres per dwelling unit in order to re-subdivide 70.51 acres into 25 residential lots with 50 dwelling units, the project. And whereas pursuant to section 108-335F1 of the Town of Hyde Park zoning law, any variance under which the authorized activity has not commenced within one year from the date of issuance is revoked without further hearing or action of the zoning board appeals. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a one-year extension of time in which to commence the activities authorized under the variance of April 27, 2023. I would, this, I would move this resolution. I need a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you take the votes of the board, please?
James Agarwal?
Yes.
Gerald Bowen?
Yes.
Paul Donnelly?
Yes.
Richard Perkins?
I'm going to be negative on this, and just, since it is going to be the fifth time, it's not going to impact them, but maybe it'll serve as a reminder that we need to get something done.
David McNary?
Yes. Okay. Resolution passes?
Thank you.
We look forward to some progress on this.
Unfortunately, even if we get started, as we said before, every lot that is required
has this variance that travels with it. So, until we build every single lot up, we will see you need again. And I doubt we'll be building every lot by next year.
Well, maybe it'll be for a new lot.
It'll be for one of the lots.
Good luck.
But hopefully we're not.
Good.
Good night.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. 2205Z, a serial front yard setback. Is there somebody here from that? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Good evening.
I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Good evening. How you doing?
Mr. Sariel, you can go up with him.
Yes, sir. Speaking for Peter.
Yes.
I'm showing picture. We're looking to change the front of the yard setback from 50 feet to 40 to finish the rehab of a home with an eight-by-four front porch.
Okay. Tell me, you're asking for a variance?
We're bringing, the home is sitting there dilapidated. We're rehabbing the whole house, and it's just sitting there. This is gonna be pleasing to the eyes, aesthetically pleasing. It's just gonna be a small front porch to finish off the rehab of the home.
And the size of it is?
It doesn't change. The footprint doesn't change at all. The inside, it's eight-by-four.
The, the front porch that you're, that you're gonna put on it?
Yes.
And the primary reason for putting the porch on is?
To make it more pleasing to the eye and make it more aesthetic.
You're indicating flooding in the, in the, in the house as well. Did you, had you done?
Um, maybe from sitting for a very, very long time.
Okay. Is there cement, is there a cement foundation there now?
Yes, already been fixed. Dug around and redone. It's block foundation.
A block foundation?
Yes.
Okay. All right. But the primary reason for putting the, you're putting a basically a four-by-eight front porch on?
Front porch. Yeah, it was just a regular flat ranch. It's just a front yard. You just want to put a porch on it to make it look a lot better.
Okay. All right. Question? Questions?
I don't remember.
No questions? No? Let's be straightforward. Yeah.
I, I went by today.
Okay.
And I just noticed that there's a dieback we use nowadays on the...
Yes.
And the gutters were kind of haphazard at this point.
The whole house is gonna be redone?
Yeah.
Yes.
Should, should that be in a better state before we approve it, or is this the right time? I don't know.
I think it's just a part of, of his plan.
Yeah, they're, they're bringing it all back. We can, I can show you the last two that we've done that looked a lot worse than this. They're brought back to...
Do you have, do you have photos of that?
Yeah. I don't have, I can give you the addresses.
That'd be great.
Yes. You can see before and after. It's, you'll see what it's gonna look like. It's not even the same. They both sold within one day.
I'll go peek. What are the addresses?
Ah, Amato Drive, 81.
Eight.
Eight.
Eight, eight, eight.
No, 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 the, the ones we did. Amato Drive and then Grant Street. The last two, the addresses.
In Poughkeepsie.
One's in Highland. Another one was in New Falls area.
Oh, Grant Street?
Yes, and, and Highland.
Oh, Highland. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Maybe you could get us...
I can get them for you.
That'd be great.
Yes.
That would be great.
Definitely.
And I can show it to you. I still, I'm actually the real estate broker. So, we bought
them, fall in the park, brought them right back, and all permits done for each unit.
It looks like there's another one right next door or...
That's what we would love to get that one. We're trying to find the owner.
Okay. There's the, there's the picture. Okay. So...
Here's a, here's what the footprint, it doesn't change.
Yeah. No, I have, I have that in front of me, but the, the front porch, okay. So the only variance is really to put the front porch on, and you're going from 50 to 42?
To 40 because of the eight-by-four porch.
Okay. Okay. Any, we're not talking about any runoff here. Water, you indicated in your application that there are water problems. Certainly you've had, you've had some floods in the basement?
We just purchased a property. All those were addressed. The foundations, they're all the way around, redone. So, we'll be doing, don't change anything to the inside. All the bedrooms, the roof, the siding, everything will be brand new. Even the plumbing, the electrical, the boiler, the whole house will be redone, brand new.
Okay. Okay. All right. Other questions? And you're putting a new deck on the back, but that does not require a variance?
No, there was one that fell off. We're just gonna bring it all back.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any other questions? All right. We are...
Motion to continue the hearing?
Yes. Wait. Is there, let me ask, is there anybody else that is here to talk about this project?
No.
Okay. Ms. Moss, anything?
No.
Counsel?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Then we will entertain a, let's entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to May 25th.
Continue the public hearing to the 25th.
Would you like us to bring back pictures of the last two rehabs that we did?
That would be good.
I can, I can bring the whole thing. I didn't think we would need them. I apologize.
No, it's all right. It's all right. We'll get it done. It looks like a, a very interesting project. Okay. So, we have the motion to continue the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. And we'll see you on May 25th, and we should be able to...
6:00 PM again?
Get everything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay. Next item, 22072, Coachum.
Hi, how are you, sir?
We're good. We're good. Welcome. I'd like to open the public hearing. Your motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. So, I'm here asking the zoning board for a variance on your setbacks for animal husbandry. Currently, the town code reads that for roosters, you have to have a, read it in 50 foot, your setback from the next local residence. I am asking for 135 foot. Also, there's, which, this one's kind of based on your definitions. Oh, I'd like to, to talk about the validity of it, but, you know, I'll say what it is anyhow. It's, it, distance from, from, from enclosed storage of, you know, manure, the, the town code reads 200 feet, and it's, and I would like a change from 150 to 152 feet.
So, okay. You're asking for a variance for the manure as well as location of the pen?
Of the coop, yes. One of the, one of the caveats with the location of the, of the waste is I don't actually keep any waste on the site. I haul it away once a week. So, the, what that is, is that's the actual, where the actual physical, your coop is. So, we empty it out and we haul it away once a week, off-site, out of town, actually. So, it's, it's, it isn't like I'm, like I actually have a hut that I'm piling it up in, you know. It's, it's, it's a, you haul it away in a contractor bag. And, and there also isn't a lot of it.
How, how are you containing it?
So, it's, it's a chicken coop. So...
I mean, the, the, the waste?
Yeah, it's, so the waste, when I haul it away, is in a contractor bag, and it's hauled up to our, your friend's farm.
Okay. So, it's weekly you're hauling off the waste?
Yeah. It's, and it's, it's waste, it's wood chips that, you know, they're, your bedding area.
Right. So, manure and wood chips are the primary content of the waste.
Right, exactly.
You're keeping the waste at this point, I'm looking at a drawing of your property in the, in the direction here, but in the back left?
Yes, it's...
Each side of your property, the back, back side, back corner?
Right.
And that's where your waste is kept right now?
Yes, that's actually in the coop.
And that's 100, okay. And that's, it looks like that is 190 feet from, from one house and 260 feet from that?
206, yes.
206 from another. Okay. All right. So...
There is another house behind you, too.
No, that's a, that is actually a, your farm. I actually have your pictures also of the, your site and of what's actually back there from your point of view. Can I approach and give these to you, or how does that work?
Can you pull?
I've got pictures.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
Let me just...
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
So... Does it show the coop on here?
Yeah. This is the, the coop is right here.
Yes.
And this is, the, the pen is, is here.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's what it is. And it's down low because of the regulation or the actual size of the pen.
Right. And radius here, is this?
From the well.
Well?
Yep. So... How about the well?
We know where...
The well is, is way over here. We still would need to know where that was, I think. It's, I, it wasn't on the... Yeah. I could find out. You got, in the past, we've done, we, we have to have, you know, you have to measure that. And the house in behind, we should know. Oh, yeah. So, there is no real house behind there. It's a farm. So, that is exactly behind the coop. The house is way up front, so it's probably over, probably over 500 feet.
Coop here?
This is the coop aiming, aiming, as you...
It's back in here?
Yes. This is your, this is a picture taken this way.
This way? Okay.
So, here are some other pictures also, so you can see the, the visual, the, the impacts of the area.
The playhouse looks really cool.
Yeah.
How many chickens do you have right now?
We have, you're 13 right now.
And how many roosters?
Two. No, one, I'm sorry.
And what happens when the chickens are done laying eggs? What do you, what do you do with the chickens? Just keep them?
Yeah. We eat the eggs.
No, no, but when the chickens are done laying eggs, like, I grew up on the farm, so...
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, at some point, the chickens can no longer really lay eggs.
Sure.
So, what do you do with the chickens?
We actually haven't gotten there yet. We haven't had them that long.
Okay.
So, we, we, you have a friend that has a farm up in Salt Point, and what the plan would be, would probably be retire them up there.
Okay. Okay. Can you come up a minute?
Absolutely.
Uh, just want to make sure I'm understanding this. Okay. Is, is this, is this coop?
No, that is a raised bed garden.
Ah, okay. All right. All right. So, here's the coop.
That is the coop, yes.
And is it enclosed?
Yes. Yes. There's a, there's a fence there. You can hardly see it.
Oh, okay. All right. Fence there. And then the, the waste relative to this?
It's, it's in, it's, that is where the roost is in there.
Yeah.
And, and obviously, there's a little bit of waste in there, and we empty it out. We have to empty it. But they're free range, aren't they? No? No, they're, they're in, they're in a fenced area. We, we, we have them, you're fully contained now. We had an issue a while ago, which, I'll be honest with you, I didn't realize animal husbandry was this. I thought it was breeding animals. Ask me why, I don't know. But, you know, ignorant man. So, we had the coop originally up right here, and once I realized, I said, oh, geez, I'm like really in the wrong here. We, we, we picked it up and brought it back there. We had one chicken that used to escape from time to time, which would...
Chickens will do that. You sure it wasn't a goat?
They, they are not anymore. So, we have, that chicken is no longer here. I, I, how it used to do it, I have no idea. Long...
Chicken catchatory.
Chicken catchatory, right, right. So, so they are, they are always 100% contained out in their area. Is there a need for a rooster? There is, there isn't a real need. They are, they are advantageous for protecting from predators. They're also, they are also, they keep the other chickens in line. So, they don't peck each other and so on and so forth.
Has any one of your neighbors ever said anything about the rooster making noise in the, in the morning?
I haven't heard any, anything about the rooster yet. There is a farm rate kindness that, that actually has roosters.
Yeah.
So, there isn't any additional impact at all if, you know, our guy, we also, it's a, a little rooster. He's a silky rooster. I'm not sure what that is.
Oh, the small ones are the, are the worst.
No, he, he actually, he actually isn't as loud as other roosters are, and we are, we are, we are trying other things to keep it out. And it's, and it works if these collars that, that...
Do they wear any shock cones?
No, 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 no. It's, it's, it's a compression, it's a, it's a, your compression thing. So, it doesn't vibrate. Oh, it doesn't vibrate and the air is loud. So, every once in a while, it falls off, going, we have to find and put it back.
But you're using the eggs just solely to eat, right?
Yes.
So, you're not, you know, like...
No, we're not selling them any. It's really...
Not selling them, but you're not having baby chickens.
We, we have once.
Okay.
And it's not something that we are...
Could have voted again.
Okay. We, when that happened, we gave them away after they were incubated.
Yeah. Okay. You have how many chickens?
13 right now.
So, what does that produce in terms of eggs?
Approximately one a day is like a really, like a, a good day. They, it's usually isn't that. It's usually maybe five or six a day, you know, high average eight, eight a day.
Eight a day. Okay. All right. So, okay. So, you're getting four dozen a week?
Yeah, yeah.
You like eggs?
Yeah.
There's nothing like farm-fresh things, am I right? There's nothing like...
And, and my parents get a dozen and, you know.
Could, could we combine?
Absolutely. I, I can absolutely bring them. So...
This picture?
Yes.
Is looking, or, I mean, is that looking at this house?
This, that picture is looking at this house.
Okay.
Which is the closest house to the coop.
Okay.
I also have letters of recommendation from the three of our neighbors. One of them was here, like, here, I believe, for a, a fire meeting. So, if you'd like, I can, I can...
Yes, please.
Yeah, if you can get those to us, that would be very good. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, can we see the pictures down here?
I'm sorry.
Take these pictures.
I'm sorry. Just, thank you, Mark. I made that.
Sorry. You guys are there?
Thank you.
Good to meet you, Mike. Hopefully. I guess so.
I don't know. Find out. Okay. Can I hear from the two young people that take care of these chickens?
I'm, I'm, I'm the one who has something.
Oh, wonderful. Good. That's cool.
Go for it.
Tell me your name.
My ma, my name is Mason, and I'm nine years old.
Fantastic. And you're in what, sixth grade?
Uh, third grade.
Okay. Okay. Who's your teacher?
My mom.
Oh, okay. Boy, that's the best. Okay. So, you don't have to do homework at home?
No.
Okay.
At school.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Tell us about it.
Um, so, my name is Mason again, and I'm here to support my chickens. And please let me keep my chickens. My chickens are family to me. I love and care for my chickens. I go back and to the chickens and visit them yesterday, every day. So, I hold them too. I love them as much as my family. I do homeschool, and my chickens are part of, of school. I learn about chickens in 4H. I'm so excited to bring them to, to the field. I'm learning so much from them. They teach me responsibilities. I give them food and water. I let them out in the mornings. I take care of them since they were chicks. Chicks is a little baby. She's a baby.
Oh, okay. That's good to know. Yeah.
Just a little clarification for the board.
Please let me keep my chickens. They are family to me.
Okay. That was fantastic. Did you write that?
Yep.
That was really good.
Good job, Mr. [inaudible].
Let me, do the chickens have names?
Uh, a couple of them.
Couple of them, did.
Um, we have a little silky named Wendell, because when I got her, she was looking all around.
Ah. Is she, is that your favorite?
Uh, one of my favorites.
Okay.
Um, I, so I have that one. I love that one. And there was another one named Blacky.
Yeah. Oh.
And then our rooster is named Roostie.
Roostie.
Uh, now...
Mr. Roo or something.
Does, does the rooster allow you to pick him up?
Uh, no.
No? Okay. Okay.
He ta, he tries to attack me.
Can you pick up the other chickens?
Oh, I, when they're, when they're just getting up from laying, I, I try to pick them up. Sometimes I do. Sometimes they run into the coop, and then the rooster comes and tries to attack me.
Oh, yeah. So, if you go into the pen, what advice would you have if we were to go into your pen?
Um, what advi- Um, what advice I would say was, um, watch out for the rooster, because he likes to come and try, and when you're not looking, he, he attacks.
Really?
When you're not looking.
When you're not looking.
Cause he, cause he thinks, cause he thinks you're, you're off guard when you're not looking, he thinks, so he attacks you.
Yeah, so, what's your favorite egg dish?
Um, my favorite egg dish is, is hard boiled. I.
Oh, that's good, that's good. Um, now, do you, have you learned to pick up all of the chicken poop?
Uh, my mom does that.
Oh, now, I'll bet she's teaching you how to do that.
Yeah.
Pretty soon, okay. Does your sister wanna say something?
Do you want to, okay. If you want to pick up?
Hi. What's your name?
Yes.
Ah, do you like the chickens?
Yes.
Okay, what'd you wanna say, honey? She's very shy. Okay, all right, that's okay. So, um, so, thank you very much. He's, he, you know, I've been hearing a lot about this. He's been, you know, this is a very large part of his life, and it's, you know, obviously, a very big thing for him, so. Thank you for letting him do that.
Yeah, Jason, thank you for, for writing that and coming and presenting. We really appreciate that. That's very good. Okay, questions on this? I think, um.
Chairman McNary, uh, we received three comments. If you would like me to read them.
Yes, do we, yeah, do we have some public comments?
Yes.
We do, yes, please. Well, let me ask before that, is there anybody here? Yes. You wanna come up, please? Hi. Your name?
My name is Kelly Stewart. Um, I own the house next door at Twenty Bella's Way.
Okay.
Um, I just wanna first say, we don't have any problem with them having the chickens as long as they're contained. Like John said, we did have an issue with the chickens coming into our yard. The one that he was talking about would chase my four-year-old around to the point where he was crying, but they are being contained now, so that is not an issue.
Okay.
Our issue comes with the rooster. The where they have their chicken coop is right off the corner of our house, which is right where our master bedroom is. We can't have our windows open during the summertime or when it's warm because of roosters. Roosters don't crow only in the morning. Roosters crow twenty-four hours a day. And like he said, the property behind us also has two roosters, which we also have a problem with. The problem is, is that they're situated a little bit further away from us, so I don't know if there's as much that we can have done about it. However, theirs is right off of our property and right outside of our bedroom window.
What number are you?
Twenty. I believe the house in the picture they were saying was the closest property is probably our house, right? Probably, no?
It's lot number two, sir.
Yeah, we're.
Lot number two, okay.
So, Bella's Way, so, uh, my name is Kelly. So, yes, we're right here. This is our house. Our bedroom is right here in this corner of the property.
Okay.
And the coop, it's, it's right there, so we're hearing everything all night long. My husband goes to work at 5:00 AM. So, when he gets up at 3:00 AM, we're hearing these chickens. We're hearing them all night long. It's not a first thing in the morn- I mean, and the chickens are noisy enough, but I don't wanna say it's not okay for them to have their chickens, because honestly, the chickens don't bother us as long as they're contained.
Okay.
They're not on our, they're not coming on our property. That was our issue. Our issue is the noise of the rooster in the close proximity to which we live to it. It's the noise issue.
All right, good. Thank you very much, Kelly. Appreciate your comments.
Did you do your name and address for the record?
Uh, my name is Kelly Stewart. I live at Twenty Bella's Way, Poughkeepsie. Thank you.
Kelly, thank you for coming. Are there others? Sir?
My name's Jamie Patterson. I'm at Seventeen Bella's Way, which is the house across the street from, I forget what your business number is, Twenty.
Okay.
Lot four?
Twenty-six, left, yeah.
It has a, your street has a very weird number.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause actually, the first house that's on the left side of the street actually isn't part of the development.
As you're looking at their house.
I would be the house directly across the street from Twenty.
Okay, so right over there.
I would be the, is, it would be yellow in the picture if it's, if it shows.
Okay, good.
I don't, same thing, I'll bring up the chick, the rooster behind, in the farm behind, that thing crows constantly. I can hear it across the street, so I can't even imagine how much louder it is on that side of the street. I have heard, you know, it's hard to tell which rooster it is. Could be their rooster, could be the rooster there, but there are now multiple roosters in play. There's three from what it sounds like. There's two at the farm, and there's theirs, so that's three different roosters. They're all making noise. It's the same, you know, it's, it's not, like, in the morning, it's all day. I mean, seven o'clock at night, you're sitting out there, it's making noise, or, you know, one of the roosters is making noise. The other, the other thing that I have an issue with is them wanting to move the pen closer to the well. That entire develop, that entire subdivision or development is on a well. Every house is on a well.
Single well, or each house?
Each house has its own well, but they all draw off of the same aquifer for that, that prop, that, all the properties in there draw off the same aquifer. My concern is chicken poop, that kinda stuff hitting the ground, what does that do with, you know, soil contamination? If it gets into, you know, that stuff gets into the groundwater, we're drawing off of that groundwater. The aquifer's down there.
Do you know how deep your wells are?
I, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up, you know, because the well water in that subdivision as it is, is bad to begin with. I mean, I got five or six thousand dollars' worth of stuff to make it drinkable just as it is. I don't need any more, you know what I mean? Um, but, the same thing, it's the noise thing, and I believe there was another.
Sulfur?
We got sulfur, we got hard water, I got, uh, charcoal, active, there's a charcoal thing. My sister, which is actually in the house next to me, which is Five Bella's Way, she's got bleach stuff, you know, she's got a hole. Cause the further down you are on the run, on the, on the end of the, the aquifer, the worse you are. I happen to be second to last. My sister happens to be the worst, so she gets the end of it, so it, the, the further up where the, the, the other end of the development's actually better, but further down towards Havilin, you get, the worse the water gets. Um, and I do believe there was a letter from our other neighbor that was submitted, um, with more stuff about even the rooster out back and what we're currently talking about.
Mr. Schler, do we have, we have another letter?
From Chris Damiya, Damiya?
We're, we're looking up something, uh, just one moment, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Here it is, David, if you wanna.
So, I'll let you guys, I'll let you guys read that.
I have a question for John. Have you had any engineering studies regarding the safety of moving the manure pile close to your well?
No, sir, and, um, actually, he was, uh, incorrect. The, the, um, when we relocated it, it actually went, uh, 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 you're further away. I wasn't, um, I wasn't aware of the issues with it, so we are, we are out, we are, uh, away from the, uh, your fifty-foot radius that is required of the well.
It's more than enough, yeah.
So, yeah, so I, the, there.
So, it's not closer?
No, no, it's further away.
That's not what it says in the documentation.
I, uh, there's, that's, what, what, what that variance is, is, um, for the storage of the nor- And the, um, after I started, after I understood that chickens were animal husbandry, so are, uh, uh, your pigs and horses and cows and, and, and really, uh, yeah, anything else. So, you can probably imagine the waste from a cow or a horse is als- is far, um, has a far greater impact than a chicken. So, um, when that, when I, you know, when I heard that and I was asking, uh, Tad, I said, Joe, is, I'm not really storing anything, like, I don't have an open, an open pen that has, uh, uh, your poop in it. I, um, I don't know if that's the right word I should use, but you get it. Um, Joe, the waste that is generated is less than that of a dog, I would imagine. And so, um, I don't, I, um, I don't really see any, um, huge impact on that front, but, um, I'm.
So, you have, um, every week, uh, you dispose of the, of, of the chicken droppings. How much is that, is that a?
It's like a garbage bag full.
Is it a garbage can full?
Yeah, yeah, it's like a garbage bag. It's a, a contractor bag, but it also has, like, wood chips in it, 'cause it's their, uh, bedding. So, we, um, we, uh, we, uh, hollow away. It's also worth, uh, worth, uh, kinda noting that if you, if you, uh, you check the picture of the, uh, chicken coop, it's actually elevated off the ground, so that is not actually touching the ground. So, there is no, um, there is no infiltration, there is no excessive infil- infiltration. It's actually elevated on a, uh, on a, uh, uh, your platform, and it's scooped out in a bag and hollowed away.
Do the chickens go outside of the coop?
Yeah, yeah, but they do.
In a, in an enclosed area?
Yes, but there, I mean, if you walk back there, I mean, uh, uh, to Mr. Donley, who, you owned a farm at one point, Joe, there's not, you know, in the chickens' walking area, you can't really s- see, um, visible excrement.
Smaller than goose poop.
It's way smaller, and they don't, that's not really what they do. They go in the, they, when they're roosting, that's what they do, so.
So, and the estimated area of the chicken coop itself, not the, of the enclosed area where the chickens are?
Mm-hmm. I, I, um, in order to comply with the area there, with the area required, which is, uh, your fifteen hundred pounds per one and a half acres? Fifteen hundred or one thousand pounds or, uh, just something like that? Um, I will, I have, I have to increase the size of the, uh, your fenced area in order to, uh, comply, so I am doing that.
So, the, okay, I'm trying to make sure I understand. The fenced-in area, which includes the coop?
Yes, sir.
And, and the disposable area for, for droppings?
Yeah.
Um, is, how large is, that whole area is contained?
Yes.
With the fence?
Yes.
And, and how large is that roughly?
The, uh, your fenced area?
Yeah.
As of, as of right now, it's probably about, uh, your fifteen hundred feet, but, but.
Fifteen hundred square feet?
Yeah, but, um.
So, ten by fifteen?
Yeah, yeah.
No more than that.
No, it's, no, it's, it's, uh, that's, uh, uh, a hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
So, it's, uh, it's larger than that.
So, you need to police that every day in terms of chicken droppings, is that?
No, the, the chickens go in the actual, in the actual coop itself, and the coop is, is there a, is there a, is there a, approach?
So, if you, so, this here is, um, right there, it's, that's actually elevated.
Right.
So, the, the, uh, the bottom of the coop is here.
And it's solid?
Yes.
Right, not like, not like with my rabbits, I let the rabbits drop.
Okay, so, so all the droppings are in, in this building?
For all intents and purposes, yes.
Okay.
There isn't any, there's, isn't anything, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be anything to pick up if we tried to pick it up up there. But, you know, obviously, we, you know, my, my children, as you have heard, this is part of their educational process. We homeschool, and they are learning to take care of them, so, um.
Okay, one of the things we'd ask you is, where are the wells for, located for these two houses?
And this, there's a house here. We should know how, where it is.
This, this, all right, I can, I, I actually sent Tad with the, um, application, there was a larger, uh.
Picture.
Plan, I can, uh, send that in.
Yeah.
Um, and with also some areas also. It's, it was, uh, part of the larger.
The plant.
Yeah, yeah, the application.
Okay, okay, that would be useful for us to, to, to look at. And then the, the well locations, I think would be.
Well, the, the one well is on there, the other one is.
One is here, yeah. Yours is here.
One's there, five's there, and is, I'm, is like way over here, um, uh, I believe I can.
And we probably should find out that one, too.
These guys, it's probably, you know, I, this was a picture, it'd be way up here.
What's the name of their street? It's a private road, but it's a, it's also a way, too, right?
It's off of Havilin, it's called, uh, the Maggie's Way.
Maggie's Way, yeah.
Okay, um.
So, you guys were part of that farm at one time, probably?
I, I, I would imagine so, yeah.
You, um, you're, you each have wells, um, you have, you have a common septic?
No, no, the, uh, the septics are, uh, 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 thirty-five yards.
Okay, so we have well and septic. How large is your line, your total?
It's, um, one point two acres.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, so, if we could get that, the rest of that information, I think that would be good. Other questions? No? Sir, did you have any other comment?
So, I don't have, same thing I said, Kelly said, I don't have an issue with the chickens. Keep them where they're at. They're, it's quieter back where it is. Moving it closer to.
Oh, yeah.
The, the house or to the well is what, what I have a bigger issue with, and I think that's what Kelly has an issue with, besides the rooster. It's not a matter of taking the chickens away from the kids. That's not what we're looking to do. It's just, it would be nice to go out, like, like, every one of our neighbors sits out on their front porch, on a chair. It would be nice to go out there and not have to listen to a rooster, rooster, you know, making the noise the entire time you're outside.
Okay.
There's other things to listen to. There's birds, there's, you know, you know, people have wind chimes on their houses. There's other things that are things to listen to, other than the traffic, you know, with it up and down Havilin Road, much faster than the thirty mile an hour speed limit, but that's a whole nother.
Twenty in front of the school.
Twenty in front of the school, but nobody seems to notice that the rest of the road's thirty.
They don't notice it's twenty either.
And high park cops don't even sit on the road anymore, which is another thing, and people drive up and down that road, especially that turn where Bella's Way is, they round that turn at like fifty. And two year, last winter, we actually had a kid that missed the turn and went out into the pond in, in front of that farm that's there.
Hmm, okay.
So, I mean, it's, it, it, there's, there's other things there.
Okay, but noise and wells are your concern?
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry to say, I've been over at my brother's house, which is Twenty Bella's Way, when the chickens were roaming.
Yeah.
And they were having an issue with that. Chickens poop. We had chicken poop on his driveway. So, chickens do poop when they're outside of the coop, even if they're in contained space, where they're at, where there's, you know, they're, they're, it's, you know, they're, they're free range when they're inside their pen, they're still gonna poop.
Yeah.
You know, I, I can, I've never seen a chicken or an animal that, you know, holds it, you know. Same thing with a dog. A dog goes outside, it's, it has to go, it's gonna go. It might not be where you want it to go, but it's gonna go.
Okay, good, all right.
Like, one more comment on that?
Sure.
Um, the, and it's, and it's, um, in the application, the, um, the, um, the fact that we have a rooster is not adding to any of the negative impacts. There's already a rooster. If we get rid of our rooster, um, it, you will still hear rooster. So, there's, there, there, I, I find it very hard to believe that this impact, that this will further, that, that us having one further, uh, impacts. So, that's, that's, that's all I have.
Have you considered, have you considered getting rid of the rooster?
We have, but as you've heard, it's, it's one of my child's.
Right.
Uh, uh, your favorites, and it's part of the educational process of having them, and also, it, 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 it's, uh, it, uh, protect, there's a lot of benefits to the, uh, to the actual chickens of having it. So, that's why we have it. Have I considered it? Absolutely. I mean, the last thing that I wanna kinda do is be up here before you guys asking for, for, uh, relief on these things, or, so, um, um, but it's not something that I think would be desirable, and I, and I really don't think that it would add to the, um, to the environment in any way if we, if, um, uh, uh, if we got rid of it. The letters that, um. if we got rid of it. The letters that, um, that Ms. Truschler is, that's yours?
Truschler.
Truschler has also, would also, um, indicate that as well. Thank you.
Good. Then, so we'll need to get the, uh, we wanna continue until the next month so we get that information on the, on the wells.
Okay.
Is there any other information?
Chairman McNary, did you want me to read the public comments that I received?
Yes, please.
The first one is dated April twentieth. This is from Paul and Jenny Hen. Hi, in regards to the property twenty-six Bella's Way, adjoining hours fifteen Maggie's Way, we have no opposition to changing the distance for said chicken pen and manure. We welcome animal husbandry in the area. Then, received April twenty-fifth. This is from Chris Demilia. Hello, I am writing a response to the April twenty-seventh, twenty, two thousand twenty-two zoning board of appeals meeting, agenda item twenty-two dash oh seven Z. I currently reside at sixteen Bella's Way and I am concerned with variance one oh eight dash four point three B five regarding the moving of the manure storage closer to the well on the applicant's property. All residents in the neighborhood have well water and I am worried that contaminants from the manure can seep into the underground aquifer that supplies surrounding dwellings. Secondly, there is a rooster in the chicken pen that crows throughout the day and may fall into the category of unreasonable noises outlined in the town's noise ordinance, chapter seventy-five dash four, section M. The keeping of any animal or bird, uh, excuse me, quote, "The keeping of any animal or bird which, by making frequent and or long continued noise disturbs the comfort and repose of a reasonable person of normal sensibilities in a residential area," end quote. If you have any questions, please respond to this email or call me. Um, I don't recall when I received this one. Um, this is from Tom O'Mara and Marge Gibson O'Mara. Uh, we apologize, we are not able to attend the meeting, but would like to support our neighbors. We have no issues with them owning chickens. The chickens eat bugs and ticks, which in turn is a huge benefit for us because we have noticed fewer ticks on our dog since they have had the chickens. The chicken coop is barely visible since trees cover it. Having the chickens has been a great learning lesson for their children. Caring for the chickens and collecting the eggs is teaching them responsibility. I would much rather have neighbors who own harmless chickens that are contained in their own yard than a neighbor with a loud barking dog. We have absolutely no issues with the chickens and feel they should be able to keep them. Sincerely, Tom O'Mara and Marge Gibson O'Mara.
Um, just for the record, they are the, they are the other, uh, adjacent, uh, adjacent property, lot four.
Okay, all right, good. That's the one.
You also had one more there, I believe. You actually had, uh, two more.
Um, and Mr. Kokum also just submitted three, three more. Would you like me to read them as well? One of them is a repeat of the one I already received, so it's, I'll just be reading two.
Okay.
Um, dated April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two from Louise and, excuse me, Louis and Brenda Jean Iacino. Um, sorry. At twenty-six, or twenty-nine Bella's Way. To whom it may concern, my name is, can you help me with that again? Iacino. Louis Iacino. I live on Bella's Way and live across the street from John and Kelly Kokum. I am writing this letter to help them obtain their variants to be able to keep their chickens and chicken coop. We have lived across the street from the Kokums since they moved in. They are the sweetest neighbors that anyone could ask for. They are pleasant, caring, and helpful. As a neighborhood, we all assist one another in times of need and this, uh, is accentuated by this family. Their chickens have absolutely no negative impact on our street whatsoever. We do not even realize that they are there. You certainly cannot see them from the road and they are almost never heard. They are an important part of their household. Uh, that they eat ticks and other bugs from their yard. They provide eggs which are used to feed their family and have become a large part of the lives of their two children. These children care for these chickens as if they were pets, teaching them about the responsibilities of owning pets as well as agriculture and providing for a family. I firmly believe that by allowing this family, our neighbors and friends, to keep these chickens, you will be allowing a family to continue to enrich our neighborhood as well as this great town. Thank you sincerely, Louis Iacino. And the final one is from Kelly A. Marshall at twenty-three Bella's Way, uh, dated April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, to Hyde Park zoning board of appeals. This letter is in favor of John and Kelly Kokum's application for the two area variances. We live across the street from the Kokums' residents on Bella's Way and approve of the changes, uh, excuse me, approve of the change in variances. Please contact us if you have any concerns regarding this matter. Respectfully, Kelly and William Marshall.
Thank you.
And, uh, just for the record, in response to one of those, I, 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 I think the way that the letter went out, um, that, cause it was the, uh, uh, just second time I heard it, but, um, the, um, way that the letter, when I was asking for variance for the animal's storage, it, and it, it almost sounded like it was that we wanted to locate it closer and that's not the case. We, we already went further away with it, so that's just, uh, just, uh, something to note.
Not accurate, okay. All right, good. So we're gonna get the other information on the wells and.
You mentioned one of the documents once we can bring, the documentation that we have for my brother's property.
Yes.
Outlines where lines are, where the well is and all that stuff.
Correct, yes, yes.
Is everything we got, we actually purchased, I don't know if that you're for.
Yes, I, yes, I actually have that. I, uh, I actually have the layout of, and I actually have your. Yes, I, 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 I also have that as well. That's fine, that's fine.
So, um, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing, uh.
Continue the public hearing till the?
May twenty-fifth.
May twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay. Thank you, and Jason?
Nice, Mason.
Thank you for.
Mason.
One question I did have. So the variant, the, what he's asking for is not to move anything closer because that's what it states in the, in the variance, though. What is the variance?
When, when I write the, uh, agenda, it's explaining what is allowed by code and what the applicant is requesting. So in actuality, they have relocated the items further away from the well.
Okay.
But it is closer than what the code allows.
Gotcha.
So that's why it reads that way.
Thank you, thank you all. Um, okay, uh, we, uh, twenty-two oh six Z, Vamiko? That, all of you?
Yes.
Good, welcome. Uh, I'd entertain a motion, no, we don't, we, yes, we're not setting up for the hearing yet. I'm not entertaining anything. This is very entertaining.
It is.
Okay. This is River Road, right? Oh, we have pictures, good. Wow. Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
I'm Michelle Zerfus with Burger Engineering and with me is Paul.
Paul Veronauskas.
Veronauskas. And Stephen.
I'm Steve Wellen, Wellen Architecture, consulting architect.
So two architects on this house, okay.
And you all sit next to each other?
Okay.
So what this is for is a single family house that's on a one point four acre, it's gonna be on a one point four acre lot. And they need a variance for height and for coverage. The height for the zone is thirty-five feet and they want thirty-eight feet, so it's just a three foot. Um, height variance, the coverage, it's a fifteen percent is code and they would like twenty-three percent.
Okay.
So, um, this is the whole size of the lot. There'll be a house here, the driveway.
Michelle, could you use the microphone under here?
Come here, anything?
I'm sorry.
Just hold it down here, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
So the, the house will be here. There's, the driveway comes in and there's a courtyard to go into garage. Then there's a second part of the driveway over here for, this is for where the, um, lawn mowers and other utility type garage over here in a workshop. There'll be a veranda in the back. So this is the coverage that goes up to, um, twenty-three percent. This section, we're proposing forest pavers so that, uh, it's, the, it'll be less, you know, it'll be less impervious if the water can drain through it. So you got the driveway, the courtyard, the house, and the veranda. And this lot is on the railroad tracks back here. The road's in the front. And in your packet was from the tax map.
Right.
Some pictures of neighboring houses. That, this one is just to the, to the south and this lot, this is a blow up of what you have, which will be on the second page of yours. So it'll be that lot.
Right.
And that one looks like it's over fifteen percent. There's another house that's farther up in here. That's, the photo was, it was under construction. And the paths are the driveways, so this one looks like it's gonna be over fifteen percent. And then one more house up that I didn't include in the packet, or actually one or two that are up in here, and this one's not in yours. There, it's well over fifteen percent, it's probably sixty percent. So for the neighborhood, the coverage isn't that unusual because these are such small lots and fifteen percent, this only, this only. Sorry about that.
Well, it does look like that particular lot, it gets narrower and narrower and that is the narrowest of the bunch.
Yes, yeah. And fifteen percent is, uh, is nine thousand feet, but by the time you get in the driveway, then a house.
This is a, a one point four acres?
Yes.
So about sixty-five thousand square feet.
Yeah, well, it's sixty thousand, yeah, nine hundred. I thought it was one point four.
Roughly, roughly.
Roughly, yeah, so.
Okay. And then, so for that, you're asking the, for coverage for?
Twenty-three percent. Cause in the code is fifteen percent.
Okay, so.
Coverage would be, um.
About fifteen thousand feet.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, show me the, the traffic pattern coming in to the house, uh, in terms of a car.
Okay, it would, this is, this is called a, this one?
Yeah.
Would come in and go into here and then there's a garage here and a garage over here.
Okay. And the, uh, the impervious one is for what? Is that excess parking?
No, there's a access to a, uh, where the lawn mowers and that type of equipment would be and a work.
Okay.
And a workshop is up in this part.
Okay, all right, the other side of the garage.
Yes, and so it's got, it's got its own, it's got a little, a garage door over there, too, so you can get the.
Okay.
The mower out and snow blower and all the other.
All right. Now, in your, uh, in your application, you, you talked about, um, the need for this to be impervious, this part when the cars drive on it. Can you, can you talk a little bit about that?
Right, cause porous pavers are notorious for getting torn up by snowplows and if cars turn, the wheels start to, on tight turns, will kick them up as well. And you can put as, you can put the sand down, you can do everything you want, but over time, the heaving starts to make them kick up. And in order for these, these aren't the tight ones, in order for it to be, meet the, this DEC standard, it's the one with the big openings. It's the type that you can't really walk across in high heels, that type of thing. So it's not the, the tighter ones that they'll put in pedestrian areas. These are the, the ones you see usually in overflow parking.
Okay. Talk about how you're going to handle water off of the, the pervious, uh, material.
Over here, this is gonna drain out and go around that way. There'll be some that drains this way. This one, it'll drain out around to the back.
Now, when it drains, what do you have in place for that? I mean, I mean, are you, you're just going natural or?
It's just gonna be natural because there's less than an acre of disturbance.
You have no dry wells or anything like that?
No.
In this area?
No, this is, this is rock.
You're plant, you're, you're building on rock?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, this is.
Is there area in the front where you could?
Uh, the front is the septic.
It's what?
The septic system. It's a fill pad in the front here.
Okay.
So that's, because it's rock, they have to.
I'm just thinking along here.
Have to put in a fill pad.
I'm just thinking, in the front of that driveway, uh, just a short way, is there anything you could do for drainage? Go to your, go to your upper left.
Here?
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
I, um, the septic tank comes out right here. I have to check the separations to the septic that are allowed. There's, cause this, there's this state code for septics to how, what the separation is to dry wells.
From the dry well?
Yeah.
Okay, so you couldn't put, what you're saying is you couldn't put a dry well in front of, to the right of that driveway as I'm looking at it?
Up here?
No, to the right of it.
Here?
No, towards you.
Oh, this way? Yeah, and this is a big rock ridge right here. But that's gonna be right on top of the septic and that, that'll be too close. And that's a, and that's upgrade.
So the water off of that is gonna flow, how are you sloping the driveway this way?
Uh, it's gonna slope out and come around the house this way. Um, the, the, the ground slopes down.
Right. So it's going down pretty rapidly?
Yes.
Seeing your, seeing as how the house is, yeah, okay. Does this have, does this have city water?
Yes, it does.
Okay. County, whatever?
Municipal, yes.
Right onto the river?
Not far away.
Not far away, okay, all right. Go ahead.
I looked at this whole plan, I said, I couldn't find the river. But then I, then I found one, one little spot there and one spot here, yeah.
Yeah, cause it's, in order to fit everything, cause it's.
It's to the west of the house.
We've been doing a lot, talking about the hundred foot from a wetland. Would that include this flood plain?
Yeah, it's, it, you don't have to be a hundred feet from a flood plain.
Okay, that's what, yeah. It would have to be an actual wetland.
Right.
Where the ground and water meet. That's what the hundred foot is from.
DEC has a definition. It's not necessarily water.
It's not that simple.
It's not that simple. It's not whether it's water or not.
Okay, so.
No, they're further than that anyway.
Okay, so the imperv, okay, the pervious, and blah, blah, blah. Okay. Now, talk about the heights of the building.
Okay, and for that, for the architects.
Oh.
That's my job.
Okay. What's this guy gonna talk about?
By the way, I tell you, all the years I've been in the business, that was awesome, hearing the, the two children talking about the chicken. I mean, I've never heard that before anywhere. So I don't know if anyone, Steve, I don't know if Steve has either, but that was great. Anyhow, back to this.
You want some chickens?
Roosters. They wanna get rid of the roosters, right, I know, so. Anyhow, again, Paul Veronauskas, architect. Um, so a wonderful sight overlooking the river, okay? It, it has quite a slope as you go down towards the river. The house design itself on the front elevation, and I believe you have elevations in your package, but.
We do.
These are colored up a little bit to kinda give you a feel for maybe materials and whatnot, which I can tell you what they are. Um, front elevation here is.
Where the driveway is.
This is where the driveway, so the court, this is the courtyard area and here, this is the main entrance to the house. This is dining room, study, uh, if that matters to you guys, but, and then the garages are either flanking on either side, okay? And the one that you were just discussing. And the one that you were just discussing about, the utility garage, comes around this side over here, okay? As you can see from the front here, it appears to be like a two-story house, okay? And it is a two-story house, but it gives that true feeling of just a two-story house here. When you go to the rear of the house, the west elevation, right, which fronts on the river?
Becomes three.
It becomes two stories with a walkout basement.
Okay.
Okay, because it's not a full exposure on that, that basement side, if you will, okay? So we have natural slope that happens here. On this side, we are actually, because of that garage door, we do have to fill in a little bit with a retaining wall and add some fill there. But we're really trying to minimize as much, I don't know if you want to call it disturbance or bringing fill onto the site, and work with as much of the natural landscaping that is there as possible. So you'll see on the other side that we have done, this is the actual slope of that side here, so we have left that, and that's what brings us to the reason why we need this height variance.
As an average.
Right, we did the average around all of the sides here, and we based it on, we talked with TAD, and we based it on the zoning method of doing that, which is fine. And it came out to, I believe it was 37.6 or around 38 feet, roughly, okay? So we were asking for three feet above the 35 feet or 38 feet for the maximum height there, for the average height, which would be a three-foot variance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And as you can see, you know, on the, on the, on this rear elevation, the beauty about that whole thing and the design of the house is that it just really takes advantage of all the views that the river can afford. I believe there's only two rooms in the house that don't have that direct view out to the river, which is, that's kind of nice to, if you think about it, to have a piece of property such as this and to have that many rooms to have a view of that, of the river is kind of amazing. So we think that the house is going to.
Be open to the public.
Well, we can talk to them about that, I don't know, we don't have to charge a little fee, but that's okay. Well, certainly from those that are going up and down the river in their boats and everything, they're going to have something really nice to look at, not that the other houses are not, they're also beautiful houses up and down the river, but it's just another one, but a little different style, okay? So, for example, the material that's being called for, for the face of the building is EPHIS or synthetic stucco, okay? So that's, that's partly what we're looking to do there, and there would be basically two colors, very earth tone as far as the main facade goes, and then the trim work would be in a, they call it a bright white in this particular manufacturer. The roofing system, hard to see on this one, but it's really like a Spanish tile, like a tile roof, but we're not looking to do those bright orange terracotta, you know, southwest color.
That'd be nice.
We're looking to, well, we can do a little bit, no, just kidding. We're looking to really keep it more in the earth tones, actually, to blend a little bit more, but we just thought it would be a nice touch to have that, that kind of a look on this house.
If you didn't have the basement, you wouldn't have a height issue.
If the site was relatively flat, no, there would not be, correct.
And you wouldn't probably have a basement like that.
And we would not have a basement, yeah, most likely.
Okay, all right, so it's the basement that really, and the terrain here as it moves down.
The natural slope of the site.
Yeah.
And having that basement there.
Which adds to the.
Yes, exactly.
And the basement is, that's probably has the, well, that's the 47 feet, okay?
The main level is the 47 feet on that.
Okay. The house to the, just in north.
I believe I had that right, the main level, the first floor is the 47-foot elevation, the.
What, are you saying 47 feet, maybe?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking of something else there.
The first floor would be the last, the, I'm sorry, the second.
The 47 is that, that's the elevation.
Yeah, you have 47 as the elevation.
47 is from which one?
The datum for the elevation, right?
So the second column is floor elevation, so that's, that's the physical 47 feet.
Oh, from the river? Oh, sea level?
Well, 47 feet from sea level, because to do the calculations, what I did was I took what the main floor was, and then I took all the, where the contours were.
Oh, okay.
Which is the second column, the existing grade, and then I just did the difference.
Okay, all right. So the average comes out 37?
Okay, correct, 37.6.
Okay, all right, good, all right.
And another thing about the design, though, that we think is kind of nice is that it's not a big box, in the sense of.
Yes.
A big square box, okay? There's a lot of roofs here.
It looks like terrain.
It, yeah, there's contours to this house on the roof line. Steve can attest to this because he dealt with the structure a lot, and he had a fun time dealing with that, so. And especially in the back, too, you know, you have these balconies that do step up to the, the second story there, so it doesn't, it doesn't feel like just this mammoth box on a site and everything. That's one thing that we like about it, too, and hopefully you guys do, too, so.
Now, the house next door to the north is just a ranch, right?
I believe it's a ranch on the street side, and I don't recall if it had a basement walkout, but I don't think there's two stories on that one, correct.
Questions, gentlemen?
It's a great project.
It's beautiful.
Thank you.
Great project.
Thank you.
Counsel?
When will it be open to the public?
I'll check with Mark.
No? Anything, Ms. Moss? Nothing? Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we need to set a public hearing for May 25th. Need a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so set the public hearing for May 25th. Thank you very much for coming.
You're back.
Looks like a nice project.
Thank you.
Now, does the train noise bother you?
Doesn't bother me because I'm not living.
You get used to it.
He's only his well, there's a better well over there.
It'll be a time, it'll take a while.
I guess it's like when you live in the city, after a while you get used to the noise.
Sort of like roosters.
Oh, man.
Oops. Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry we didn't get a chance to get something difficult for you.
He covered it all. Oh, you did a great job.
It'll be up next time.
Okay, good.
I'll be a fashion publisher.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the last item, ISAC, do we have somebody there?
Doesn't look that way.
Hello?
I don't believe so.
Really?
Nope, doesn't look like it.
How does that work?
Yeah.
We wait till next month?
I believe we have to set a public hearing.
Oh, because we advertise.
No, we haven't advertised.
We haven't advertised, but we should set a public hearing.
There's a stipulation in the code, you need to set a public hearing within a certain amount of time of receiving an application, so.
Then I would move for a public hearing on the ISAC application.
Yes.
Is there a motion to that effect?
What day would you like to set it for?
For May 25th?
So then it's a new application introduction in May.
No, it's a public hearing. The first time will just essentially be what would have been tonight's, yeah.
Okay, all right, so a motion to set the public hearing for the ISAC request on density for May 25th? I move that, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is there, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Madam Secretary, is there anything else of business?
No.
Ms. Moss? Counsel?
No, Chair.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We are done.